First order of business is a presentation tonight. Is there anyone here from Senator Joseph Midian's office? Seeing none, we have prepared a proclamation in his honor. We will have it passed on to his office. He is leaving office after two terms, and we appreciate his support of the County of Santa Cruz, of the City of Capitola, and he's always been there when I needed to call him, and he's always taken my calls. So, thank you, Joseph Midian. We'll move on to a report on closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. Closed session went in tonight at approximately 5:30 PM. All the council members were present, as was the city manager and the deputy city attorney. The council members discussed anticipated litigation, the three matters under the government code section 549-569.9, and took no reportable action. The council members discussed the negotiations related to the property listed under government code section 549-56.8, but took no reportable action, and the council members received an update from their legal counsel regarding the existing litigation, the eight matters listed at the very end of the closed session agenda. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to public comments. Anyone who would like to adjust the council on items that are not on this evening's agenda, please step forward. Seeing none, we will go on to council and staff comments. Are there any? I would like to welcome back our treasurer, Jacques Bertand, after a stint in the hospital. It's good to see you up and around.
Thank you.
Welcome back. Kirby?
I'd just like to note that longtime Capitola and Ron Graves is in the hospital, getting a new knee, and we wish him well. And I'd also like to ask everyone to save the date, Saturday, November the 17th, at 11:30, from 11:30 until noon, a train will come to Capitola on the 32-mile branch line that was recently acquired by the county, and that's going to have vast ramifications for us in ways that haven't even been imagined yet. And we're going to have a very, very small celebration of that on Saturday, November 17th, 11:30, and it'll be up at the Old Depot on the corner of Monterey and Park Avenue. So, it'll be a good time.
Thank you, Kirby. And I'd like to request of staff, our council on the environment seems to be, our commission environment seems to be in a state of flux, and it's gotten to the point where I don't know the players without a schedule. If we can get a report sent to us about who still attends, who is still involved, and whose appointment is who, it would help us a lot. We'll move on to consent calendar. These are items taken as a single vote. Is there anyone from the public or the council who would like to pull any items in the consent calendar? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to pull, go ahead. I'd like to pull item D, as in dog.
I'd like to pull item B, which is the check register.
Questions, or do you want to have it heard at the end of the meeting?
No, I can, I can do it either way. I can do it right now, real quick.
Go ahead.
Okay.
I'll try a question.
Go ahead, ask.
This, this is the register from September 21st through October 12th, and approximately a one-month period, because you had the days before that. And we made two payments to, to design community and environment for a total of $47,000. Can we get some accounting back to us as council as to what money's been spent on to them and, and what, what they did during this period to, to go to a $47,000 payment?
We can get that for you, yes. You will be, we'll be talking a little bit about the general plan update fee and indirectly talking about this contract as well later on this evening.
Okay, thank you.
And Kirby, I think you had a question on item D. Perhaps the chief might be able to answer it, or do you want the city?
Yes, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilman.
Thank you for coming forward. The, in October of 2009, I know we got a grant to hire some new police officers. I know at, at the time, there was a concern that if we hired these people and then the three-year grant money went away, which was funding their compensation and so forth, what would we do? And so, now I see that that time has come. We're at, in October of 2012, and the funding is going away for at least one of the police officers. So, what's going to happen to the officer?
This is the only budgeted cops' grant officer that we have, and we had built that into the budget once the grant had expired. So, we're, we're able to continue to have that officer on, on service.
Okay. Question?
I, I think you're specifically, we, we had one extra position that was funded for several years. That position, we're currently, we're not filling right now. And so, we're going to go back to our normal level of staffing with the officers.
It's remaining vacant.
It's remaining vacant. Does that, does that answer the question?
That answers the question. Thank you.
I apologize.
Thank you, Chief.
That's correct.
Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The general government public hearings, the first item, is up for recommended continuation by a request of the applicant, and I suspect this is to a date uncertain. So, is there a motion to continue?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We'll now go on to item 9B, receive report regarding year-end cash flow requirements. And our finance director, Tori, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, you'll recall that I brought this item to your council a year ago, about this time when we were in a position of looking at the annual fluctuation in city revenue and expenditures. And due to the reserve funds, which were depleted through the response of the 2011 flooding, we were looking at a plan to get through the lull, if you will, in cash flow that we experienced in late fall and early winter. Previously, two years ago, when the, gave the authorization, we had a two-year, a year ago, we had a two-year plan, because we knew that this wasn't going to be a one-time thing. So, this is Tori's report now, summarizing what we did last year and where we sit again this year.
As, as the city manager mentioned, he pretty much covered most of the information on the, the first slide, indicating how we needed the, the short-term cash flow needs and where we could borrow from. Just to give you some background, why this issue surfaced over the last year or so is, is because at the beginning, if you look at the beginning cash balances, and this is just the beginning cash balances, for the last five years, you can see that we were at 2.2 million on the combined funds, and now we're down to 706,000. So, because of that reduced amount of, of funds to rely on, we're having to now go into the other funds, or we're becoming more concerned at year, at calendar year-end, that we may not have sufficient funds to cover all of our, all of our debts. And if we look at internal cash transfers last year, we used about 1.5 million, and we were able to pay back these funds in April. Just to give you an idea of the, the cash trends the, the city has, if you look at the very beginning of the, the graph in July, you'll see there's just a small purple shade, which is a general fund. We've been start, we were planning to start out at about 100,000. And as you go through the months, you'll see that the cash flow is reduced to 200,000 in mid-December. And I've separated December out into two different sections, because up until December, close to the mid-December, December 15th, we have at least one payroll to go through before typically, we receive a, just receipt from the, from sales tax, sales tax in lieu and property taxes. When we receive that, it peaks up at about one point, it, it peaks up close to 2 mil, up 2 million. And going across, you can see where we go back down, and the general fund doesn't become positive again until, until April. So, to help us through this particular shortfall, we've been, we've been concerned about whether we may need to go forward and borrow beyond the internal service funds and the reserves. And based on this model, it looks like we'll have sufficient funds to cover us during that period. Now, while the resolution gave us the ability to borrow from the CIP fund if we needed to, we aren't anticipating it. However, there are still some variables out there. As we go into the lowest point of the year, we have about 200,000. Due to the RDA dissolution, there still could be the clawback of 152,000 related to the city RDA loans. We're still working with the Department of Finance on that item. And then, some of the, the costs that we have associated with the dissolution, like the new audit, it's coming out of our administrative allowance. However, we didn't necessarily prepare or budget for that, because we didn't realize that was coming in. And with the new audit requirements, there's increased staffing time, because we have to go through two different audits as part of the, the closeout of the RDA. Another item that could affect the cash balance is that we've projected $350,000 in performance from target and sales tax revenue. And if that doesn't come through, then we may not have the sufficient funds. And then, if it does perform better, then we might come up with a surplus. And then, there's always general economic conditions. But as of right now, at this fiscal year, it looks like we'll be able to make it with our internal service funds and our reserves.
One, I think the overall, and this is probably something I should have said at the beginning, overall, the, the city's budget is balanced on an annual basis, the budget that you adopt. What this is really dealing with, we're talking about now, is, is the, the timing in the receipt of revenue to the expenditures. And, and the good news is, is that right now, looking at the projections and everything else, we look like within the existing sort of traditional borrowing that we've done between our reserves and our internal service funds, we're okay at that low point in December. We do have the authority that was granted this last year to use CIP funds, if necessary, to help bridge that gap. Last year, we had the authority, we didn't need to. And then, all internal service funds and all reserve fund loans to the general fund were paid, as Tori indicated, in April, when we do turn positive for the fiscal year.
Are there any questions of staff? Kirby?
This is a little bit troubling to me. I, I see a trend here that I'm not quite sure we're going to be able to cope with. When you recognize that at the beginning of the last fiscal year, our funds were almost 3 million, and at the beginning of this fiscal year, the funds are reduced now to 2 million. Last year, we borrowed money for operating expenses from the funds, and we squeaked through. And so, what's, what's happening this year is that, well, we don't have enough, maybe, in those funds to squeak through. Prior to the recessions that began back in, really, we began to feel the effects in 2007, 2008, we didn't have to resort to that kind of borrowing, neither in-house, where we're borrowing from ourselves, or certainly not going outside and borrowing institutional money to maintain the operating funding that we need to provide the services that we have for, for the community. My question to you is, looking at last fiscal year and this fiscal year, what are your projections for next fiscal year? I mean, what, where are we going to be next year this time? Are we going to be down another million? And what do we do then?
Councilmember Nichol, first, I, I do want to make clear that historically, the city has always, has always borrowed money from its internal service funds and its reserve funds to finance the operations during the course of the year. This is the model that we've used for, for probably more than a decade.
But I, I beg to differ with you. I think in the past, we have borrowed money from the contingency reserve fund, but we have not gone into all the other internal funds.
And that's correct. That's correct. We've had to borrow much more deeply because of the damage to our reserve funds that was done through the flood. The difference in the last two fiscal years that you're seeing is that we were able to defer some of the flood expenditures through, through this last fiscal year. We pushed out some of the expenditures, some of the big bills. So, what you saw was effectively that it took a while for all the flood costs to run through the system, if you will. So, looking ahead to next fiscal year, we don't have more outstanding. We don't have a bill to bail for. We don't have a bill to Granite Rock for emergency repairs. We don't have any known additional costs at this point for the flood on tap. So, our position, presuming we don't spend more out of the reserves, is only going to improve and the economic conditions don't deteriorate further. So, I guess, to answer your question, is what do I see looking ahead to next fiscal year? We will continue to make strong recommendations for staff, is that as we have available funds, we need to make allocations to the reserve accounts. I think if we're in a position down the road, we should strongly consider expanding the reserve accounts. In this day and age, what the timing and the receipt, what the state has done to the city through the timing of the receipt of revenues, is put increased pressure on us to maintain something like about 1.9 million dollars of reserves just for operating expenditures. And I think if we are in a position to be talking about revenue in the future, where to put it, I would strongly encourage the council to consider increasing the reserve amounts to cover those operating cash flow deficits that come out during the course of the year, simply due to what the state's done to the city. So, to answer your question, it won't, right now, there's nothing known that will make it worse than it was this year, if that helps. We've, we've hit all of the expenditures that we have for the flood, and at this point, we're now operating on a balanced budget.
Right. My, my point is that I think we're in a more precarious financial condition than we've been thinking that we have been for some time. And, you know, on top of that, we've cut back half a million dollars in our capital improvement projects fund at well, as well. And I feel like we've gotten to a point where we've reached into every nook and cranny, and we've taken every last dollar out, and we don't have any place else to reach. Okay? So, I don't, I don't know that we can count completely on the, the recession going away and the economy rebounding to, to make up that deficit. So, I recognize that there were some anomalies with the flood and so forth in the past 18 months. But I think we need to really be careful so that we don't get into a deeper hole next year for, for any reason. Those are my thoughts.
Sam?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Jimmy, I just wanted to follow up. You said that there wasn't anything else that would diminish our reserve position. But I wanted to be clear about the potential clawback from the state. That, we have not budgeted that. And if that were to happen, that 152,000 is coming out of some reserve funds that we have.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Story, that, that's correct. What I was talking about, there are no, no more bills associated with the flood that we have at this point. But there are, there are known unknowns, if you will, and that's one of them, isn't it?
That is, yeah.
That potential clawback. And then, there's, of course, the unknown unknowns, that, you know, the state could do something else to us. And obviously, we're just not in as resilient a position as we have been in the past, or probably that anybody around this table would like the city to be in moving forward.
And, you know, and I know we haven't quantified, but we have issues with the rehabilitation of the Pat Cove property that could potentially also diminish our reserve position further, because those are not budgeted in this year. That's, that's accurate as well?
I, I think that, you know, we do have funding, we have, we secured funding to close the park, and we believe that the funding that we've secured to close the park will get us all the way there. Obviously, we don't have funding today in the bank to fund the next project. And if we're going to do the next project in a timely manner, like I think we have discussed with the council previously, it's going to have to be either debt financed or we're going to have to wait to do the project and save up to do it.
All right, thank you. And I, I just wanted to ask if maybe the slides that were presented here could be emailed to me, or maybe all the council members would like to have that information. All right, thank you.
Questions, staff? Tori, would you go back to the first slide? That's the one. You bring that up. I'm, I'm just trying to reconcile the combined balances, and it seems like 8, 9 versus 12, 13 is about a million and a half dollars, which actually seems consistent with what the flood cost us. And it seems like that's where most of the reduction has taken place. Is that accurate?
I would say that's correct, and it appears that 1.5 is the number that we're going to be close to being down this year, which is the same as last year.
Okay. And this does reflect the fact that in our last budget for 12, 13, we voted in that budget to increase our reserves by a quarter of a million dollars. Correct. As per our goal. My question is, even though we did that, we're still even lower.
That, actually, that number was, was prior to the transfer. The transfer occurred just a little bit later in the year, but that was the beginning balance. So, they actually go, go up for those accounts, and the internal service funds go down.
Right. Okay. And then, you were good enough on page 78 to give us a combined funds and estimated cash flow chart. And forgive me, it's, it's not the kind of cash flow chart that I'm used to seeing. I'm used to seeing how much more money than we need as a plus and how much we're, we do not have that we need as a minus.
Okay.
And perhaps we could get something that looks a little more like a standard cash flow chart for, heaven help me for saying this, like a business, which we're not. But it would be nice to see, you know, exactly what our cash position is each month, as far as a plus and a minus, how, what we're, what we are negative, and therefore, how much we're taking out of the funds on a month-by-month basis.
Now, this is a, this is a cumulative number you're looking at.
I appreciate that.
So, it remains positive, but you're not seeing how far negative the different accounts are.
Right. I'd like to see where we are. You know, December 1st, will I have?
Data behind that.
Right, absolutely. That's a, a brilliant chart that is almost impossible for me to get any real numbers out of, because I just can't follow things quite as, you know, directly. But thank you. That, graphically, that explains it.
Yes, and, and we have the supporting documents that we can provide.
And it would be nice if, on, you know, every other council meeting on a once-a-month, once-a-month basis, if we just get a quick recap without listing all the funds, just saying where we are positive, where we are negative, and where the, where the negative was, was backfilled from. Okay?
Okay.
We'll open this up to the public. Any who'd like to come up and speak to us, please step forward. Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Council, this is just a receipt or a report, but I think we have comments that we need to make.
So, I would also like to encourage staff to bring forward some of the sales tax and TOT tax trending and show the, how what's happening is, measures up against what we projected, because I think there will be some bright lights in that, in that report.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Tori. Our next item is the receipt of a report regarding the general plan maintenance fee. Welcome, Susan.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. It is, maybe we want to do a slideshow. There we go. Again, good evening. Tonight, what we have for you is you wanted a report on the general plan maintenance fee. As you are all aware, the city originally adopted the general plan maintenance fee in 2004. You reviewed your general plan maintenance fee in 2006 and raised it slightly at that time, reviewed it again in 2009, when you were anticipating starting a process to update your general plan, and lowered the fee at that point to six one-hundredths of the building valuation, which is paid when someone comes in to pick up their building permit. At that time, you had estimated the cost of doing your general plan and that the general plan maintenance fee was going to bring in approximately $500,000 in the next four years to go toward the cost of that project. We have a chart, if I can get to it, because I thought it was easy, it's easiest to explain if we look at the actual numbers and what the money's been spent on and how much money has been coming in. As I indicated, starting in 2009, the fee was what it is today. And the beginning balance in the general plan maintenance fund that year was a little over $500,000, and that year, it generated $155,000. There was some money spent that year that was related to the housing element that was prepared for 2008 to 2014, approximately $99,000. In 2010 is when the general plan update was started and contracts were signed. And unfortunately for that year, the revenue fell short of what you had anticipated. signed, and unfortunately for that year, the revenue fell short of what you had anticipated. It had been hoped that this fund would generate about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year to support the cost of doing the new general plan, and that year, because of slow development, the revenue was only a little over fifty-six thousand dollars. And we did have expenses that year, and I have broken them down in staff cost and consultant cost, because one of the things that this fee has been used for is to pay for staff in the community development department who have been working on the general plan projects. And in two thousand and ten and eleven, you had a full-time community development director spending part of his time working on it, and we also had David Foster, who a significant amount of his time was billed to this project. In two thousand and eleven, twelve, we had another good year as far as revenues were concerned, and that the fund generated a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, and that increase partly was because of the target project coming in and building permit fees being paid on that, and the eleven-lot subdivision and development that took place off of Forty-Second Avenue. In that year, the staff cost was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, rather than taking money out of your general fund to cover those positions, you took it out of this fund, and the consultants' costs were sixty-one thousand dollars. We're to two thousand and twelve and thirteen, and now we're starting to make projections about what we think is going to have happen, and we projected when the budget was done in June that we would get a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in revenue. So far, we've gotten about thirty-three thousand dollars in revenue, and my expectation is that we will not reach the hundred and sixty-six thousand dollar target, because, as I mentioned earlier, this fee is paid when someone comes in and pulls a building permit. And we had had some hopes that there would be a larger project coming in that would be pulling building permits in the spring, and now it looks like that that one particular project may not be happening in the spring. And without a large project, it's unlikely that we will reach the revenue number that we had included in the budget. The unfortunate thing is that your staff cost has gone down to seventy thousand dollars, and our contract costs have gone up to a hundred and seventy-two, because we are in full swing of working on the general plan. There are projections going out for two thousand and thirteen and fourteen, and that will basically complete the general plan process. The next big expense that you're going to have to come out of this fund will actually happen in two thousand and fourteen and fifteen, because you will need to again redo your housing element. At this point in time, the way the community development department is structured with the staff setup, most likely you will have to have a consultant come in and do that project for you. So, you know, we included that the cost would be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it could be a hundred thousand dollars. Again, it's really just our best projection of what that cost will be. So, you can see from the numbers up there that ending in two thousand and fourteen and fifteen, there's certainly not going to be any excess funds in the general fund account. This is a fee, and typically, cities review their fees, and Capitola does, once a year, and you adopt a new fee schedule, and what seems most prudent is that this particular fee be looked at every year when you adopt your fee schedule to do a projection of what projects are going to be coming up, what state mandated updates you will be required to do, and make a judgment based on how much you have in the account, and how much money you're going to be needing in the future to cover those costs.
Susan, how much of two thousand and twelve, thirteen, a hundred and seventy-two thousand and one hundred, how much of that have we paid the consultants so far this year?
We've actually paid them the amount that you saw on the check register tonight.
That's to date?
That's to date.
That's forty thousand dollars?
They, yes. They had gone to a new billing system, and so we had had some disputes about their bills. So, the reason it's so large on this particular check register is it actually covers their billing going back to the first part of June.
And I heard from members of the GPAC and from Councilmember Norton that a report was received at the previous GPAC meeting that, from our consultant, that a different city's name in the report, which kind of alluded to a lot of cutting and pasting going on. How much do you still love this consultant?
Well, I think that all consultants cut and paste a bit, because, you know, some of the work you don't want to completely reinvent, and, you know, I wouldn't be too excited, because there, this was a draft document, that there was one line in there, I believe it was on an environmental policy, and it referred to the city of San Carlos. So, you know, some of the language that will go in any general plan, when you're talking about the state greenhouse gas laws, is going to be pretty boilerplate language, because you're simply required to have it in there by the state.
I totally understand that, and if we weren't paying them nine hundred thousand dollars, I'd be a lot less excited about it.
Well, remember that you're, you know, you're not paying one consultant nine hundred thousand dollars, you're paying for a number of different products, one of them which is going to be coming to you in December, just the local hazard mitigation plan, you're paying for a climate action plan, you're paying for a new zoning ordinance, you're paying for a new local coastal plan, you're paying for a new general plan. And the council may have different ideas now, but based on the contract that you agreed to when you started this project, we are exactly on time and on budget.
I guess I was just hoping for actual creativity to come forward. Are there any questions, staff? Dennis?
You know, if my memory serves me well, that when we started in this general plan in the update, when we agreed to as a council, we'd already banked six, three, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars at that point, and we were, we knew we were in the process of getting a couple grants. So, we were already at nine hundred and fifty thousand. I just don't understand how we're so far behind in actually the collection of this. And my second part of my question is, is why do we, why do we put all the burden of our general plan update, which is a city function all the way across the board for every person that lives here, on new development? I mean, I certainly believe that new development should pay their share, but there should be some other means that we collect money on this thing. And now, it's totally being borne by any new development that's going to, it's going to happen within the last two years and up to the next two years. And I'll give you an example, is a minor duplex here in the city just went through the process and paid sixteen thousand dollars just to get a building permit in general plan update. That's absurd. That's just, that's not even realistic, and I think by law, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that you can only, you can only charge someone to the service that you provide under that service. And so, I don't see where the correlation for our fees right now to what we're charging people coming forward with projects is to what, is their fair, excuse me, their fair share of cost in the update, and what they should be responsible for.
Right. You certainly can debate any kind of fee, whether it's a traffic impact fee, whether it's a park fee, because those fees are charged on new development that's coming in. And that system and the rate that they're charged was set up when you initially created the fee. It is certainly, you know, a city policy decision, you know, of who pays for what. Clearly, the, you know, general plan maintenance fee is covering the city's staff time and cost to work on the general plan. You could take that out of your general fund, rather than having it paid for this way. You know, those are policy decisions that cities get to make. My experience is typically, cities do look for ways to have ongoing programs, like a general plan maintenance fee, to accumulate money over a number of years to pay for something that is going to impact the entire community. But the structure of fees and the way the state requires you to do it is that they are paid when someone comes in for new development to take out a building permit.
So, in reality, we're really, in the last ten years, we initiate this process where we're requiring this fee structure. Where we were lax is the twenty years before that, that we should have been collecting. And so, I'm hoping that we move into a time when we complete this process, where we can spread this cost over the next thirty years till we come to another general plan update.
Oh, I absolutely think you should, and that's why I mentioned at the beginning, I think you ought to annually review this fee. And, you know, it's unfortunate that as soon as you finish your general plan process, you're going to have to go into rewriting a new housing element, but once that's done, then your costs should significantly go down.
Susan, how different, how different will a new housing element look than what we have right now?
Well, in all honesty, I can't answer that question, because I don't know what the requirements are going to be.
Okay.
The last time we did a housing element, you had a redevelopment agency, there was a whole different structure up at HCD, and I actually have my first meeting on the fourteenth of November to start getting some input about what's going to be required in the new housing element. And it may be significantly different, because all cities, not just Capitola, there is no revenue source for low and moderate income housing now that redevelopment has gone away. So, I believe how it's going to work is going to change significantly.
I remember going through this process on the last two general plan updates, and the last one particularly, where, as a council, we spend a lot of time here throwing globs at the wall and see what would stick.
Yeah.
And we finally did that. Maybe that's the best process for us. Maybe we don't need to go to consultant, maybe we just find out what the requirements are and sit here as a council, and come up with a plan that the council, that the state's going to accept.
Yeah. I think part of not only the housing element in this one, you know, what, if you continually are engaged with your general plan, if you continually, you know, amend it and review it and use the document, you don't reach a place thirty years after your last one where the whole thing needs to be redone. And hopefully, you know, I mean, I can, I can personally agree, this was a big undertaking for a city the size of Capitola to completely review and revise all of these documents at one time. So, you know, the city has to be vigilant and not say, well, we don't have enough money this year, so we're not going to, you know, get involved in that process, which it's very easy to do. You know, we are, we're, at this point, I would say, two-thirds the way through it, so it wouldn't make sense to me to change at this point in time, because we've already spent a lot of money, and we want to get to the place where we have our finished products.
Thank you, Susan.
Any other questions of staff? Sam?
Thank you, Mayor. And I guess I wanted to go back a little bit about what Dennis was mentioning about how we allocate the cost of this particular project among developers and the residents overall. And I'm looking at the staffing cost, and I assume that those staffing costs are for, they weren't new staff that were brought on just due to this project, they were existing, already fully funded staff that had allocated time on this project, and it was charged to this project.
Right.
That's correct, right.
That's correct. So, there was a savings in your general fund.
Fund, right.
Because your general fund didn't pay for that staff person's stuff.
But if the general model is under our taxing structure, fee structure, that we have enough taxes to support a staffing of a certain size, the general population and the consumer has already paid for that. And then to transfer, or it seemed like we could avoid transferring that once again to the developer, and so, in that mechanism, trying to allocate and spread out appropriately between the general population of the residents and the developers, so that we don't have this double costing, and it's a better allocation, we can maybe keep our fee down to encourage more development, which is, I think, ultimately all to our benefit. So, maybe something to consider for the future as we look at it. Now, I'm not proposing that we do anything immediately, just because we are in a precarious financial situation here, but I would encourage the council to maybe look at that issue, that policy issue about how we allocate those costs. And I do think, I mean, Dennis, I think that we could, maybe every five years, throw the projects on the wall and see what sticks in a review cycle, but, you know, after not having revised it, and this is going to be a twenty, thirty-year document, I think it will turn out to be worthwhile ultimately to do that, but we need to be diligent and impress upon future councils not to get behind on the review and update.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Mayor.
I was really referring to the housing element itself, as about throwing it on the wall.
Well, just to the housing element.
Just the housing element, yeah.
That's just creative lying.
Creative lying.
And that's, and what you're seeing here is a creative way to balance our budget.
Yeah, 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 I recognize that.
Yeah, I...
Convincingly lying. I'm sorry. I misspoke.
Yeah. My, since I won't be here in two thousand and fourteen, my piece of advice is that you take on the task of looking at what properties you're going to have to rezone first. Often, that comes at the end of the housing element process, and I think Councilmember Norton is correct, you need, the council needs to make those policy decisions upfront, and that will shorten your process and save you a lot of money in the end.
I like that process.
Thank you.
Kirby?
Yeah, I think Councilman Norton's point is well-taken. The general plan is an omnibus document, treats every aspect of life in Capitola. The, part of that omnibus document that is in any way related to somebody building a deck, or somebody doing a remodel, or somebody developing a commercial structure or whatever, is very small. And it's not fair for those few people to carry the weight of the entire package, and, you know, that needs to be looked at, and I hope the next council does that.
And I think what we're seeing here is in the next go-around, that that fee will probably be, by council consensus, drastically reduced. My fear is that if we, in the next twenty years, build up, you know, a chest of money of two million dollars for the new general plan, that's what it will cost. If we build up a chest of three million dollars, that's what it will cost. If we think that these consultants don't see how much money we have in our pocket, we're fooling ourselves. Stephanie?
I just wanted to say, I hope it's not a twenty- or thirty-year plan we got behind. It's supposed to be a ten-year plan, and we just got behind, behind in it. And I know Dennis and I and other people were very strong advocates of, you know, let's get the general plan going, because there is, the longer you wait, the more old things you have to deal with, and see whether or not you want to keep them, or you want to maintain them, or you want to expand them, or you want to do away with them. So, this has been kind of a hard, it'll be kind of a hard process just because of that, because we're looking at some information that is so old, that needs to be revised and rewritten and so forth. But, so I hope it'll be more like a ten, twelve-year...
And I would suggest that staff become, you know, facile in doing our own cutting and pasting. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak on this? Didn't think so. We'll move on to the next item.
Can I make one more statement?
Please do.
I'm actually looking forward to, off on the general plan process, to moving the zoning ordinance. And I think that a precursor should be done on this to bring it to council, to see what concerns there are, and also the planning commission. what concerns there are, and also the planning commission, to, to see what concerns, what problems are. Staff knows what the problem is.
Right.
If we do, we may be able to shorten that process somewhat and help you through things that we, we see are issues out there.
Right. And, and we have done some of that with the planning commission, um, but have not done it with the council yet, so we can make certain that that happens.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, Susan. We'll move on to receipt, receipt of a report on elected officials' enrollment in the California Public Employee Retirement System. Staff?
Mr. Mayor, we will do this without a PowerPoint slide tonight, which I know is unusual for me. We'll see if I can get through it okay. The mayor asked staff to prepare a report about how CalPERS works for elected officials for the city council in the city of Capitola. The city, city of Capitola in 1970 opted into the CalPERS program and entered into a contract, whereas CalPERS State Retirement Board would offer a pension for Capitola employees, provided the employees and employer of the city of Capitola paid a certain amount every year for that. At that time, council members were not included in the original CalPERS contract. In 1992, the city amended its contract with CalPERS to add city council members, elected council members, to the CalPERS contract, which meant that each year of service, council members would get the same retirement benefit that anybody else in the city would receive. The city is obligated to provide a retirement package for everybody who works for the city, part-time employees, full-time employees, because we don't offer social security. We have to offer some alternatives. Currently, we have two options that we offer within the city of Capitola. PAR system, which is kind of like an equivalent to social security, a lower-cost equivalent. It's not a pension, it's, if you will, a more of a savings plan. And PERS, CalPERS. Currently, so Capitola, so today, council members are enrolled in CalPERS. It's optional. You can enroll in PARs, you can enroll in CalPERS at your own choice. However, once you've enrolled in CalPERS, you can't unenroll in CalPERS. Once you're working for a CalPERS agency, you have to stay in CalPERS. The cities of Scotts Valley, no, excuse me, Watsonville, Santa Cruz, and the county offer elected officials the opportunity to participate in their CalPERS program. I know that Watsonville, the elected officials pay their full way. In Capitola, council members participate in CalPERS the same as any other miscellaneous employee. They currently pay 8.3% of the CalPERS, total CalPERS cost, and then the city pays the remaining 16.5%. And that concludes the report. I'm available for questions.
I'd like to go back to our ability, um, upon election, to be included or not included. If someone were newly elected to the council, said to you, "I don't want any retirement program," is that possible?
No, that's not possible. They have to choose either CalPERS or PARs today.
And what about the, the legal notion of we, we preside over issues that directly affect our own retirement program? What is the legal view on that?
Mayor, um, the government code actually permits you to vote on your own salaries. So, the government code sets out the salary for council members. It allows you to vote increases to that salary at specific rates. It doesn't specifically speak to voting on your retirement benefit, but it does speak to, um, council members being able to have the same retirement benefit as other employees. So, as long as your retirement benefit isn't any greater than the employees, which are the same class, then there doesn't, there is not a problem, that I'm aware of.
And we have the same salary cap or, or PERS cap requirement that any other employee has, so that if this council were to vote an increase in the pension benefits of its employees, which they would bear the cost of, we would also bear the cost as a percentage in our paychecks?
That's correct.
Our paychecks are so small that, you know, we're talking about $3 a month or something, I don't know. And maybe you could speak to the notion that, um, there's, there are no other agencies, you know, cities in the county that, where the electeds aren't involved in some sort of a retirement program, PERS or PARs. Is that accurate?
The, the only example that I don't, I would say that they are, all have to be involved in some retirement program. The only question is, in Scotts Valley, they, they may be a social security city. I don't, I don't know off the top of my head. If they're not in social security, then in all likelihood, the council members are required to be, they are required to be in something, and in all likelihood, they would be in PARs.
And maybe it's something you can get back to us another time, but the financial advisors that I've spoken to in these last two weeks tell me that if you are in PERS on the council, and you get off and you start collecting, um, social security, that your social security is reduced dollar-for-dollar for any money you receive from PERS.
That, that is generally true. There's the wind, windfall elimination program in social security, and there are certain situations where you can overcome that if you have enough years in social security. But I know for myself, because I looked at that, because we're a non-social security city, I remember investigating it, and, and it's true that every penny I was going to get in a pension would come off money that I would get, uh, from social security until I reached some maximum age.
Yeah, when you reach 66, it no longer applies.
I think it's 72.
No, I'm getting it right now at 66.
Getting what?
Um, so, that, that my pension, nothing, nothing, no income comes off of my-
After 66?
After 66.
Oh, I thought it was 72.
No, 66.
I'm, I'm not sure exactly on the date, but I know that they do deduct dollar-for-dollar up to a certain point.
And then, once, so if the 19, please explain the 1992 decision by this council to include the council into PERS. What was happening, what was happening before then?
Prior to that, I believe that the council members only had the opportunity to enroll in PARs. So, in 1992, the council was added to the, the city's contract with CalPERS. I went back and looked at the staff report, and there wasn't a lot of discussion in either the minutes from that time period or, um, or in the staff report about, about what the, what the reasoning behind that was, but that's when it took place. I did talk to the city attorney a little bit about it from that era, and he didn't recall it as a particularly significant issue, um, which he said led, lended him to believe that, in all likelihood, it wasn't, it just wasn't a matter about which there was a lot of discussion at the time.
And so, any new council member that comes on can choose between PARs and PERS?
Yes.
Because I believe that the council, the planning commissioners are in PARs, are they not?
Yeah, that's correct. Planning commissioners have to be in PARs. I don't believe, they're not elected officials, so there's not a position for them in CalPERS.
What if someone, by some stretch of the imagination, who's already in PERS, gets elected to the council?
I don't believe that that person, I actually shouldn't, I, I don't know. I don't know if they would still have the choice, because there's, the general rule is, once you're in PERS, you stay in PERS. Again, with electeds, often the rules are different, so I don't know off the top of my head whether or not hypothetically in that situation, if they would have the choice of enrolling in PARs or in CalPERS.
Maybe hypothetically, in the next three weeks, we'll be able to find that out. Any questions of staff? Sam?
I don't have questions at this point, but I would like to have an opportunity to make some comments. I didn't know if you wanted to go to the public first.
Let's ask, anyone from the public who'd like to comment on this? Please step forward. Someone, please, operate the timer.
I'm Peter Petru from the city over there.
You're over there?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I was a city employee for the city of Santa Cruz, and when I retired at 55, because I didn't like any of my bosses, okay, so I retired, it was early retirement, but apparently, uh, social security cut me off about, I only get about half of what I was supposed to be, I was supposed to get, because, um, uh, uh, San Francisco City did not pay into social security. And so, it was a big hit, I think, you know, because, um, you know, only half of what I was, uh, getting from all the years I had worked, more than 40 quarters anyway, uh, in private industry and elsewhere, and the army, okay?
Great. Thank you, Peter. Anyone else? Glenn, come on. I know you can't resist this one.
All right.
You let the cash flow thing go. I mean, the least you could do is talk to us about this.
Are we ready? Thank you. Um, I would like to share some information about the availability of PERS within the county. I spoke directly with Carlos Palacio, the city manager in Watsonville, and in the history of the city, they have offered PERS as an option. Up until very recently, it never was accepted, and there's only one member of the city, current city council in Watsonville that is a PERS member, okay? And it's a she, and she pays both sides of the deal, whatever their percentage is. I also took the liberty of calling all the other cities that were in our benchmark six cities. Five of them do not make PERS available. One of them, Laguna, does. It's optional, and only one member of their council. I don't know if they're 5, 7, 9, 11, who knows? But they only have one member. So, certainly, uh, I'm sure we look at other parts of the country, the state, and you'll find them, but it's not a universal thing. I'd like to talk briefly about the economics. Unfortunately, none of you were at the Joe Nation speech about the condition of PERS. But let's just go through quickly.
You have a minute and a half.
I know, I got it.
You're on.
Basically, a two-term council member will walk out of here with $100 a month for life. During that eight-year period, they all contributed $500, $5,000, $4,000. They get that back in three years, three and a half years. And for then, they get $100 a month for the rest of their lives. That is a wonderful deal. We talked about Target. Do you think that people who go to work for Target, that get $500 a month and work for eight years, retire with a pension of $100 a month? Do you think that people who work for my wife's store, who work part-time and work for eight years and make $600, $500 a month, retire at $100? That's a no. At Gail's, which has more employees in the city, over 100, if you work part-time for Gail and, and you work for more than eight years, you don't get a $100 a month pension. The point is, the permission to allow you to do this is inappropriate. It may be legal, but it's not right. Each one of you have on occasion recused yourself. Kirby, recently, because he was a member of the bank, yet you're allowed to participate in the most expensive contract that the city negotiates, and it's okay. In 2007, three of you up there voted to increase your pensions because they were part of the city, for 25%.
Thank you, Glenn. Your time is up.
I don't think that's right.
Final comments, council? Sam, you had a comment?
Yeah, thank you. Um, you know, I, I really feel that, I mean, this issue of council's pensions, I mean, it's kind of related to what the city wants to, what kinds of, of individuals they want to attract to be on the council. I'm not sure if it's the same kind of people that you want stocking shelves at Target, but that's a choice that this, people of the city can make and should make. And my view is that, you know, they've made that choice in 1992 and have let it, uh, be retained for all those decades. I assume the citizens have determined that it is in the best interest in order to attract the kind of candidates and the kind of council members that they would like to see. I do, Ed would like to address the last point that Glenn was trying to make about what happened in 2007. I think that, uh, that was an unfortunate vote, and the council members should not have voted to change, uh, the retirement formula. And I recognize that it was done indirectly because they were voting on contracts for other miscellaneous staff. But the blowback was that it also impacted the council members. And I think that that's the real issue here, and that there should be a separation, and there should be full disclosure, and I think, public awareness about when those kinds of votes are coming before council members, and if they're voting on negotiated contracts that may impact them. And that does raise the question, can council members have a different formula than other employees? Sounds like maybe they can. What we hear from Glenn is that other cities, they have been able to, maybe we should continue and look at that. And so that, when the question of approval comes up, that, um, never again are council members put in the position of affecting their own pensions. And that's referred to either a citizens group or the finance advisory committee not including council members to ultimately make that independent decision and recommendation. I think that's the only piece here that maybe we should try to address and fix moving forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Kirby?
Anything? Do we have a mechanism whereby, um, city, city contract employees' contracts can be approved by anybody other than the city council? I mean, would we-
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Norton.
Are you suggesting that we let the finance advisory commission, um, make that vote? I don't even know if you could do that.
Well, I think where it's involving council members and either the pay or the benefits for council members, either up or down, that's my view. I mean, it, it's a conflict of interest.
We vote on our own, on our own pay all the time. Well, every eight or 10 years, this council reviews its own pay and approves it.
I don't think the council should do that. I mean, I, I think that-
If not the council, I think, Kirby's question is, if not the council, who?
Well, who, remember, we delegate that authority to. I mean, that, that's, I certainly think their authority resides here, but we can delegate it to an independent third party, okay? And so that, you know, we're not independently making that decision. I just don't, I mean, aside from whatever may be legal, um, I don't know that it's the, it's the best public policy for council members to do that. Who knows? You know, I mean, maybe the group would feel at some point that the pay is too little. They're not attracting a number of candidates. We currently have three candidates for the two seats. That's the lowest I've seen in years and years. If residents are happy with that kind of political turnout, then it's their decision. And if they want to maybe attract, um, more candidates, well, the way you do that is offering better pay, better benefits. And, um, so, that's my, I mean, I, I certainly think that we could delegate that to the right authority. I don't know. It should be, um, that decision should be made by council members. One thing is that, and probably during the course of that, we've never changed it. So, it's really, you know, it's not really a serious analysis or review. We've just perpetuated what has previously been decided, I think, except in that one case.
Maybe we need to have a study.
Yeah, I'll find a consultant. Yeah, Dennis.
You know, I'll follow up on Sam's statement. I, I agree. You look at Scotts Valley and Watsonville, where all those, all the candidates, city council are running unopposed. There's school boards and fire boards all over this, this county that people run unopposed. And, and there's, there really isn't any draw or any interest in participating in government. And, you know, I, I don't know, there's probably a lot of reasons for that, but certainly, there, there needs to be a mechanism. And I look at the amount of pay that we get as council members. We're getting, we're getting $500 a month before deductions. I, I think that we do a lot of volunteer work, you know, is what we do. And so, in that cycle, that, this little bit of, a little bit of, it doesn't bother me, although I'm going to take a personal stance is that I would be better off if I did not receive, um, the, this pension. I would, if I had a choice to opt out, I would opt out, and I'll tell you why. Is that if you're self-employed, which three of us up here are, that, that if you, if you are, if you are in the PERS program, you get a retirement, you cannot make contributions to your IRS account that are tax-deductible. Think about that. So, if you were to make a $5,000 contribution, I was every year, I cannot use that as a tax deduction. I cannot write that off because I already have a retirement account with a city as small as it is. So, that happened to me for two years, where I couldn't make contributions. In fact, the IRS had me pay more money, significantly more than it would be for I go on retirement money, just to, just in back taxes. So, so if, if you gave me a choice as a council member, I would say, "I, I really don't want to have it." But I'm, I'm not going to rock the ship. I think that the small amount that we receive for what we do here is, is, is just compensation and a bottom line.
Stephanie, you have anything?
Just, just, I like, I'm intrigued with Sam's idea, you know, getting the advice of another group, like the finance advisory committee, or running advise, you know, some equivalent group like that would be, would be useful, I think, to say, "Do you think the council's getting paid enough or not, or too much, or why not, and what's happening here?" And, you know, everyone's willing to review it. I think we did.
Frankly, thank you for the report. I think this is all small potatoes with regard to the council. And to make the kind of bizarre mathematical nexus between how much you put in and how much you get belies a misunderstanding of the word annuity. There is no pension that equates how much you put in to how much you get out. Now, defined contribution equates how much you-
Now, to find contribution equates how much you put in, how much it makes, and how much you can draw, but to say, you know, the $6,000 that we might make, and how much we'll contribute, and then how much we'll get for the rest of our lives, you know, I hope to live about 20 minutes after I leave office. I'm sorry, you got the better part of the deal. Anyway, thanks for the report, let's move along. Consideration of resolution to support Mayor Michael Terminy's candidacy to the California Coastal Commission. Staff?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Stone's seat on the coastal commission is going to become vacant as he terms off the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors. The city select committee is called upon, the mayor's select committee is called upon to nominate individuals for this seat to the Speaker of the Assembly. The city select committee met last week, and your mayor was one of the names nominated for this seat. This resolution, before you say, is to forward a resolution to the Speaker of the Assembly recommending your mayor to sit on the California Coastal Commission as our local representative.
Questions?
So, I think it's really important that we, the city of Capitola Coastal Community, would have some strong voice on the coastal commission, and I commend my colleague, Councilman Terminy, for throwing his hat in the ring. This is another one of those public service jobs that you don't do to, for personal enrichment. It will cost him more to do that than he would ever make, and I commend him for his volunteering for the job, and I move approval of the staff recommendation.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any other comments? Sam?
Before we had the vote, I would just like to be so bold as to ask why you would like to serve on the coastal commission.
Well, I don't know of any, well, there are very few small towns that have the ability to do this, or that someone steps forward on, that actually exist on the coast. I can't imagine a town that's more affected by coastal commission decisions, of a town of our size. And I think it's important, I think that I have also a full understanding of the construction industry, and how it lives and dies by the coastal commission decisions, and yet, at the same time, I look at decisions like our present representative, Mark Stone, Supervisor Stone, has done, naveling with the lava here, and I think he did the right thing. I think that you have to be able to stand up, and you have to look at the important issues, and if it doesn't work, regardless of the stones that are thrown, and there were many, he made the right decision, and I think I have the mettle to do the same thing.
All right, thank you.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Is there anything we can do farther than that, Mike? I mean, is there...
That's about it. I have no idea how this process works. This is truly seeing the man behind the curtain. I don't know. It's magical. And if I am fortunate enough to be on the coastal commission, it'd be nice to see how that really works, too. So I will bring back a report. Any last comments? Yes, you have a score? Anybody know the score of the game?
Two-nothing Giants in the top of the ninth, Steve, is that right? Bottom of the ninth.
Bottom.